This evening, so I'm gonna be running tonight's meeting. Uh, the meeting is open to the public. Public comment will be taken at the end of the meeting prior to a closed session, which I don't think we have. This is all time here. Anyone wanting to speak is requested to sign in, should be into Windsor resident. When you speak, state your name and address and be, please be advised that time is limited to three minutes. Okay, the first thing we have on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the February eighteenth work session. Dana sent those out.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as, as written.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor seeing my saying aye?
Aye.
Alright. Next thing on the agenda is the final draft of the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Okay. So don't have too many changes, uh, from last time we met. Um, enterprise revenues, no change there. Our revenues, uh, are one million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, which is, uh, six thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven lower than fiscal year twenties, twenty-five. Um, expenditures, all categories are complete except for the water and sewer capital projects transfer. And will, those will be the last things we do for balance and holding per capital projects discussions later this evening. So the, uh, at this time, the expenditures of one million, um, nine hundred and thirty-two, no, I'm sorry, one million, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars are exceeding revenues of one million, three forty-nine, three fifty by five hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight sixty-three. Uh, obviously, this would change if any other, uh, changes are made to the budget. And I ju- I did, for your information, I did add in under general fund a, uh, capital projects total, um, which you will see, did I pass it? I think, um, find it. Yeah, it's down, uh, right before the total, uh, revenues at the bottom. So, and us, we've separated all the line items out for the capital projects in both general fund and enterprise fund. So the total, total there, uh, for capital projects and enterprise is three hundred and seventy thousand. And one minor note is, uh, Clerk Treasurer Mangus is looking a little deeper into the postage and telephone for water and sewer, and that may increase, we may increase these items slightly, but we're talking a hundred and fifty dollars, probably two hundred dollars total between both, between both categories. Um, any questions on enterprise? So, general, skipped around, I think, but, uh, general fund, no change again, um, from last time. Uh, revenues are one million, three-two-eight, three-hundred, which is a hundred and seventy-six thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety higher than fiscal year twenty-five. Um, expenditures are, all categories are complete, uh, except for municipal building and public works. And under those categories, uh, just a couple of things of note. The, uh, office equipment service agreements, uh, we've been talking about this a little bit. We need to replace the network video recorder or the NVR for the cameras. And our price from Spikers was very high at eighteen thousand, three-seventy-five. We received a, a price from Info Pathways of, uh, forty-three-hundred-and-five dollars for just the NVR and twelve thousand, seven-hundred for the NVR and new cameras. Uh, so we lowered that line item back to, uh, seventeen-five and kept it the same as fiscal year twenty-five. And we will likely use Info Pathways and replace the NVR and possibly, uh, cameras this fiscal year. Uh, to be completed yet is IT support computers. Uh, we are planning and accounting for cybersecurity. Uh, we received a quote from our current IT vendor, Maryland IT, and we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow. Uh, Clerk Treasurer Mangus and I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, uh, with our IT, with Corey, with Maryland IT to, uh, go over our current costs versus proposed costs. So we're, we're kinda holding on that line item based on that meeting tomorrow. And then, uh, under public works thing, I added a... I added, um, capital project storm drain, uh, project line item, um, just for consistency of, of totaling the capital projects. Uh, the twenty thousand that you see in there was previously in the line item, um, uh, above it, uh, under street and sidewalk maintenance. I just split it out of there, so, uh, we keep it as tracking as, as capital projects. And then to be completed is the capital project transfer. Again, that's the last to, to balance things. And, um, so on the general fund side, the expenditures of, uh, one million, five forty-eight, nine forty are exceeding, exceeding revenues of one million, three twenty-eight, three-hundred by two hundred and twenty thousand, six forty. Again, anything, any changes will, will affect that. And then the total capital projects for general fund are four seventeen, five hundred. So, that's pretty much, that's it for budget. Not many changes from last time, just a few, a few little tweaks here. Anybody have any questions, further discussions? Everybody good for now?
Next. Twenty-six, general and enterprise fund projects discussion, capital projects discussion.
Dave, you wanna take that?
Sure.
Since you requested it?
Yes, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I re- Gary sent us the, um, a document with all the, the, um, general, all the projects for both the general and enterprise fund. Um, so I reviewed all those, as I'm sure most of you have seen. And, um, so it had one, one question and then one discussion point. Um, so we have equipment. We are, um, one of the proposed projects is to replace the two thousand and thirteen Chevy, um, with a new truck. And it, um, thirty thousand dollars, um, split, sixty thousand dollars, split thirty thousand each between the general fund and the enterprise fund. I did not see it listed in the enterprise fund projects on the list that you sent out. I did not see the thirty thousand added there. Now, the budget you just went over, I, you were, you were cruising pretty fast, but I see capital vehicles and equipment new. I see a sixty thousand dollar under the public works. I see sixty thousand there. Um, but I didn't see a split on this list between, I didn't see the thirty thousand in the, in the enterprise side of it. So I don't know if it was just overlooked on this list, but then that would change the...
Just make sure my totals right here. So it's not showing up...
It's on there.
It's on there.
Yeah, it's down the bottom.
So, uh, it's just not highlighted yellow or, or gray. Since we look at the capital projects, water, it's the second to last suit. And then up right above it is capital vehicles, equipment.
Oh, my bad, yeah. We split it again.
Yeah.
But today's point is not, it's not showing up, um, on my list.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, I have to add that under enterprise.
Well, it's only, it's only showing fifteen thousand there.
He split it.
Yeah, but we're not getting, we're not getting a new truck for thirty thousand. We're getting a new truck for sixty thousand.
Right.
Well, 'cause there's sixty in the first and then there's fifteen in the other.
There's two thirteens. There's a fifteen under sewer and a fifteen underwater.
Okay, so that's ninety thousand.
But not on my list.
Yeah.
In the budget, but not on my list.
Cool.
Yeah. So I'll add, I'll add that in.
Alright, so, so thank you. That's not, that doesn't really affect the, the budget. It just affects this, this list. Okay, now, I wanna discuss the, the trucks a little bit. So, right now, our fleet, we're gonna replace a two thousand and thirteen vehicle. So that's the old Chevy vehicle. We typically use it to do some plowing. It's starting to rust, it's starting to go bad. It's, you know. But we have a two thousand and twenty-one, um, Ford. We have a two thousand and twenty-two, the big Chevy fifty-five-hundred. And we have a two thousand and twenty-three, another F-two-fifty Ford. So we have three new vehicles, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And now we're gonna buy a twenty-five, okay? Um, so strategically, I'm concerned about that. Um, that we have put ourselves in a position now where every, and I don't know how long we think a truck would last, our public works. Is it eight years, ten years, twelve years? I don't know. But whatever that next cycle comes around, whatever council's here is gonna be faced possibly with four, replacing four vehicles. That's if these last, you know, there's not an accident or whatever with these vehicles. If they're still here on our fleet, we're gonna be at some point thinking about, yikes, we got four new vehicles to buy in a relatively short period of time. Now, I started going through that and trying to see, so I extrapolated our vehicle purchases out to two thousand and forty-eight. Okay? Because I was trying to see if there was a way for us, maybe every four or five years to buy a new truck to get them into a queue where we could start budgeting that when a truck hits an age...
Right.
Shh, still has some value, we can, you know, 'cause it's not like our personal vehicles, that we may run it longer than we want. We have a, a town relying on these vehicles to plow and whatever else we do with them. So, um, you know, I did that and I could not, like, like I said, I extrapolated out to two thousand and forty-eight. I could not get our vehicles down to a, a level that we were only keeping them eight years or ten years. I got them out to almost twelve and thirteen years, and we were still buying a new vehicle every four years at, at, at the earliest. And maybe four years isn't horrible for, for a town to do that. But that's still, at this point, because of the position we're in right now, keeping vehicles, uh, for twelve, thirteen, thirteen years. And I don't know if they'll last that long or, or not. So, I guess what I'm, um, I don't know the answer. Like I said, I, I extrapolated this out, but, um, I'm thinking if we buy another truck in two thousand and twenty-five, we are, are just exasper- exasperating the issue that we're having. So maybe, um, so, no, maybe. I am proposing that we put off buying a truck this year and maybe push it to twenty-seven. And that would give us a, a four-year bump from our latest new vehicle, um, to help start spreading the, the purchases out of vehicles. Now, what would, that would do to us is that would make that Chevy would have to last two more years. Now, could it last two more years? I think so. It's getting rusty and we use it for plowing. So depending on, that's pretty much the, the, the bulk of what we use that vehicle for is plowing. So I think we could probably scrape two more years out of it. It's, it, it probably won't be worth a whole lot of money when we get rid of it, um, you know, unfortunately. Um, but, um, I think maybe that could at least start to help the problem. We can't get away from the fact that we have twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. We got them, we're gonna live with those. And, but for future purchases, at least if we put it off for two years, um, it, it may start to, to help us figure out what we're doing for a strategic, um, position of buying vehicles. Now, um, I still think, you know, I, I, I talked about it, that the town could use a side-by-side for our, our maintenance workers. And, um, and that would help lessen the need for the truck as well, because they could use that for maintenance around here, running up to parks, the water, and they could carry stuff. Um, they could use that quite a bit in, in the, the downtown area, um, instead of using one of the trucks. Again, I think, you know, I was looking at them, uh, they were twenty-ish. Wayne, I think, priced one out and said, probably with the things we need on the dump bed and all that kinda stuff, it's probably thirty thousand. And, um, so it's not like we're saving, we're saving half, not huge amounts of money to, to do that, but, um, that would maybe help, um, the, the vehicle situation. So that's, I just wanted to bring that up and maybe get your guys' thoughts. Um, you know, I keep vehicles a long time, so it's not a big deal for me. But I also realize that they're not my vehicles, they're the town vehicles, and we do need to make sure that they are, you know, a hundred percent functional all the time for, for our crew. So.
Just real quick, before you guys get into discussion. So you're, you're proposing to push the truck to twenty-seven and bump the side-by-side...
Twenty-six.
Flip those two.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, the, um, the one, I guess, good thing that I think about the vehicles is that the, um, dump truck will probably last longer than the pickups. But you do make a good point with the pickups, at least, um, with they, their cycle, especially with the salt, um, because we use them for plowing, really, they rust out before anything goes. So that, that is a good point there.
I think Wayne is elaborating, he's better at this than, than what I, what I am, but he'll tell you, I'm sure, that it's not, we don't put a lot of mileage on our vehicles.
Right.
It's, it's more idle time, engine time, and then if, they are commercial application trucks, and they're not, like you said, they're not personal trucks that, you know, we take, you know, care of, like we take our own vehicles. These guys, I do, uh, they do take very good care of them. But the salt, as everybody knows, is very corrosive and very tough on equipment, vehicles and equipment. So, yeah. But, and Will's point is, is well-taken, too. The, the, the bigger truck dumps tend to last longer. They're not the day-to-day real usage as much as the other vehicles.
So that's the twenty-two is our big Chevy fifty-five-hundred. And I know that, um, this year, they found that a little bit difficult to plow with in some of our narrower streets. But you're right, I don't think that that would be on the same timeline for, for, for getting a new one or anything like that. But...
Comments? Anybody else?
I would just say, too, the side-by-side is a good idea, 'cause when we're talking idle time is the most of the, the issue. You ride a side-by-side, you just turn it off and, and go. Whereas, it's not as easy to do that in a truck.
I'm in agreement with that, with the proposed, uh, you know, pushing out that, that purchase of that truck this year. If we can get the side-by-side to kinda still keep the wheel rolling, pardon the pun, but, yeah.
Okay.
I'm in favor of that.
Do you need to vote for that, or?
Do we have to vote?
Just change the budget.
Yeah, no, just make a change.
I mean, if you guys, it's fine, I can just change it in, in the fiscal year and then adjust the numbers in, into the budget accordingly.
Now, is there any, you know, is there any negativeness that I don't know about from public work standpoint for not getting that truck? Now, I get it. Obviously, if the thirteen would kick it, then we wouldn't have trucks for all our guys that are able to plow. But I guess as long as that remains functional, I don't, I, I couldn't think of that there was any other negative issue about it that...
There's still enough to use the rest of the time.
To handcuff them or, or hamper them, but...
A lot better than what the Dodge was, so.
Yeah. I mean, we can, I can, I can talk with Wayne tomorrow. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, but I can talk with him tomorrow and, and, and see if there's anything, you know, see what his thoughts are, let him know what you guys were all talking about. And, you know, we can go from there. He can reach out to you guys, or whatever, however you wanna do it. We're gonna be meeting again in...
Couple of weeks, yeah.
What, what's the next one, April?
Two weeks. Pretty close together this time, isn't it?
I mean, we, and that, per the schedule, I think, is just budget introduction, but, I mean, it's, these are just minor adjustments and, and changes.
We still could introduce it if that was changed.
Easy enough to do.
Okay. Is that it?
That's what I had on the, um, other than that, a- as far as I was concerned, the rest of the capital projects were, were things that we were talking about and gonna do, so.
Okay. Next item is the proposed water and sewer rate adjustment to a tiered system. Councilman Fark, did you wanna say anything?
Sure. So you have in front of you, uh, for Q-one and Q-two for calendar year la- of twenty-four. The first page has both a current revenue figure and a, uh, revenue reduction spreadsheet. And then the second one is just a current revenue, uh, calculation. Talking with, um, everybody in the office, it seems that we should be maintaining revenue best that we can for these projects that are outstanding and, uh, searching for revenue to complete. So, I will take questions. Um, I can explain the charts if need be, and we can take it from there.
Well, I guess I'll start. Um, the, the one thing, I mean, the tiered system has come up before. Um, in the past, uh, the issue was, um, the manpower to actually implement that. And then, and from what I've heard, it seems that that's been fixed. The, the one concern that I still have is, um, how it would affect our small businesses, um, within town. Um, you have, you know, places like Uncle Matty's, you got Frankie's, you got Blizzimo's. Um, how their water usage would, would, um, either increase, decrease. That's kinda, that's kinda my main concern.
Uh, from memory, at least two of the three would see a small decrease. And I believe the last one would see a very small increase. Um, they hover right around the fifteen thousand, uh, gallon per quarter usage. So they, they are in that, uh, real close to seeing a decrease, um, or the slightest of increases that would be impacted.
Yeah, 'cause my, um, my main concern was like, if you have a business that, like, uh, any of the food services where you're using a lot of water, how that would impact. But, but the fifteen thousand gallon range, that's pretty standard for most, uh, even residents.
Yeah, and, and I would argue, and I would hope, that if the, um, roughly sixty-four, sixty-five percent of residents that see a decrease, maybe have a little bit more spending money to visit the local restaurants and would certainly offset that slight increase.
One thing that I did wanna point out in the charts, uh, the, the two on the right for both of the sheets is the, uh, bar graph of percentage of revenue sources. Um, it's interesting to see what we are, um, relying on, uh, for the water and sewer revenue. So the current, um, revenue sources is on the right and the tiered system would be on the left. So, since you have Q-two up, um, the current Q-two spread is about thirty-three percent for each of the sewer and the water base rates. So two-thirds of our water revenue is coming from them. And then usage is another third, where with the tiered system, fifty percent of the water revenue is from usage figures, and then twenty-five percent each for, uh, the two base rate figures. So we would see revenue fluctuations with conservation. But the last time we had this conversation, um, Director Myers brought up the decrease in, um, water and sewer expenses because of chemicals and wear and tear and treatment. We can absorb, will offset a lower revenue with lower expenses to a certain point. So if we did begin to conserve water as a town, we'll see that, a, a similar outlook in expenses for treatment and maintenance and wear and tear.
I mean, one of, one of the biggest complaints that I hear, too, is like, you, you save water and it doesn't change your bill. So I think the tiered system does help with that, where if you do save water, obviously, um, you'll be saving on your bill.
So, um, well, I got a couple of things, 'cause you, you threw before a loop when you sent out the, the new, the, the second quarter, 'cause then I had to go back and, 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 and reevaluate what I had, had done, um, after evaluating the first time. But, um, just quickly, on, on the new charts you sent us with the second quarter, I noticed that we had more heavy users in second quarter. More people that used... Am I reading this right, right? We did have an increase in the fifteen and twenty thousand categories. Um, and it's like decreasing in the under-five and under-ten-thousand categories.
And the over-hundred that, right?
Four versus one?
Yeah. So it, that's, that surprised me a bit that, um, there was substantial additional usage in the second quarter, which was Sep- October, November, December, which I would've thought the first quarter would've been, you know, much higher, because July, August, September, you're still hitting the summer. And, yeah, and so that, that surprised me. But, but none- nonetheless, um, so I, I liked the tiered system that was based on, that really had no loss of, of revenue, um, stream for the town. Now, we're a, my, my household is a ten-thousand gallon, maybe a hair under occasionally, um, user of water. And, um, you know, when I plugged my numbers into the, the two different scenarios, the one where we have an opportunity to lose some, some, um, revenue, my bill would have gone down twenty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents for, for the quarter. So, okay. When I put in the other way, um, the, the, where we keep our revenue pretty much the same, my bill changed by fifty-seven cents, okay? For, for the positive, for the positive. And I thought, well, gee, that's a little bit of a shell game. But, um, what it doesn't take into consideration is that I have, as, 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 as Councilman Hall just said, I have the ability to, to influence that by, by using less water, right? Now, it would be hard, I, I still think it would be hard to, to drop a thousand gallons of water. You know, that's ten percent of my water. And when I look at what we do, showers, laundry, probably not gonna happen for me. But there's probably a lot of people out there that may be in different situations that just use water like, like it's just free water. And they have an opportunity to save money. And so I think that's a good thing, right? You're putting it on them, um, this is the, the charge. And if you wanna save some money, hey, you cut your, you know, you cut your shower shorter, you find ways to make sure that your appliances and everything else are, are, uh, uh, up to standards that will help you save water, and, and you, you go with it. So I certainly appreciated all the information. I did a lot of number crunching and a lot of looking, and I know it was a lot of work on, on your part and, and the staff's part, pulling this all together for us to, to look at. But I think that, um, it certainly is opportunities for citizens to control their, their water bill the, the best we can, and still, um, make it a self-sustaining system, which is important to me. I don't wanna have to subsidize the, the water and sewer systems. I think they should be self-sufficient. And this allows us to do that, but allows homeowners, residents to control their, their water consumption and, and their bill a, a, a bit, the best they can, so.
Point, Dave, um, our water bill was around the ten... Point Dave, our water bill was around the ten to fifteen mark before we had our daughter. And now she takes about three baths a day, filling the whole bathtub. We've we've gone up to the twenty. And so things like that where you might not see a huge savings. But if somebody like me that, you know, uses water a lot and then decides, hey, I'm gonna use less, could save forty, fifty, sixty bucks. So that, to your point, it's helps.
So a couple of things. One, this kinda came to to fruition because of trying to help. Fixed income and and lower income households that gives them more power to actually make a change. If they can cut something, then they save a lot more with a lower base rate versus the current standing. The I have, since you brought up the over a hundred thousand gallon usage. I have those four counts. Two are the school because they're back in session for Q two, so that's gonna come up. One is the fire hall that is not getting billed. And the fourth, I'm not gonna name, it is a local business. They did not come, they did not populate in the first search that high. I think there may have been a skipped reading or a misreading. They were very, very low in Q one. So this figure may be a combination of Q one and Q two that is now getting billed. Because when I go back and look at the Q one figures for them, they are at like a thousand gallons for Q one. So I think this may be getting put together.
When was the? I don't wanna read details about this particular bill. But I remember because of getting a new meter that I had one bill that was lower. And then the next one was higher. And I remember like Kim cut off something. She 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 said, let me know that it was probably not gonna be the same as the next bill we got. I remember when that was time wise, what what quarter it fell in. I just wonder if that has anything to do with it too.
I can follow up with Kim.
It wasn't on the Main Street project, was it?
No.
That meter thing is just because you're you're coming from an old meter to a new meter.
They had to cut me off at when the meter got pulled versus versus the actual reading, so yeah. This is just like a curiosity question, I don't want any details. But are these really high users or these households for the most part, these other high users?
So.
The big, big ones, but.
The over thirty thousand are predominantly out of a single development. A few of them are multi unit rental properties. So that number is then split across five, six units. So there's some skewing from that aspect. There are a couple of others that are spread around through Old Town and the other developments. They are predominantly in the larger households. But, yeah. The last thing that I wanna mention, we can play with these figures if we wanted to. We used these base rates and these usage figures to make it a. It just happened to work out very cleanly for both revenue percentages, but then also meeting the current revenue. We could potentially lower bills for more of the town. But at a much smaller percentage by adjusting some of the rates. So this is a suggestion, this is the proposal that we have come up with. But it is possible to adjust it further if you guys wanna see a larger impact. Population wise or a larger impact percentage wise.
Have you seen, like, has has Wayne or anybody talked to you about like? I know we have like an average usage, but is there some sort of target that they're looking for? To see like if we can get most households down to, you know, fifteen thousand gallons a quarter. Would that save them, you know, more on chemicals versus twenty thousand? Or is any, I mean, it seems like most people are are already at like the fifteen and under.
He hasn't, he hasn't said anything. I think the average for Q one was like eleven thousand four hundred gallons. And that's been pretty steady for for several quarters or several years. I could certainly get that info.
Well, I'm I'm just thinking cuz like if if the average is that, I would I would suggest that we keep that as like the. Lower rate. And then that incentivizes people above that average to then calm down.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I would not wanna skew our numbers to make more people receive some kind of discount. So they say, eh, good deal. I would I would rather, you know, I would rather me have a fifty seven cent and say, well, if I wanna save another ten bucks or whatever. I need to to figure out a way to 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 try. And I'd rather have everyone do that because if our goal is to, you know, have people conserve water the best they can. Then we need to have an incentive to do that as a as opposed to, you know, just a gift.
You're saying lower that that tier cutoff.
Yeah, so like the cutoff.
More the the average.
Yeah, if the average is eleven thousand, either either the ten thousand or the fifteen thousand, I would say would be the.
Versus.
The cutoff, yeah.
I mean, I think the people who are low users are not gonna be able to, I can't imagine being able to use. We're we're pretty stingy with our water and I can't imagine being able to do, I don't water my flowers, I don't anything, you know, so. Toilets, you know, don't rinse the dishes before they go in, you know, I mean, you know.
You are already doing the conservative.
That's what I mean, I'm already doing it. So so my bill might go down fifty seven cents, it might just stay the same or, you know, whatever, which is fine. But the idea is really, like you said, to incentivize some of those folks or maybe.
Don't fill up your swimming pool.
Like buy plants that don't need to be watered every day or something like that, you know, things like that, you know? So and then also to share the those, I've always liked the idea of of the bigger users covering. Cuz we're paying for the bigger users. Because, you know, those of us who don't or anybody who doesn't use a lot of water is paying to subsidize the folks who do use a lot of water. With all the chemicals and the infrastructure and all that, so this is a fairer system.
And that was one of the initial goals as well was what does that, how do we make that fair?
You want it to be fair.
And this this will help, like I said, lower income, single income, fixed income. But then also families that are right at that kind of breakover point that if they do save a little bit. Now they're falling below that average and figure or just seeing that decrease in their bill. Because they're not letting kids run with hoes, three baths a day, I'm in the same boat. For the rec for the record, for the record, my water bill is going up if we adopt this. This isn't self benefiting. I understand that we could certainly be better with our water usage and then we have two kids.
Alright, so where are we with this, folks?
I I mean, I like it, I I like the the incentive.
I like the incentive too.
We have communicated with our town attorney for this. She does not believe there needs to be any sort of public hearing or anything like that. Because it is more or less a benefit to the majority of the town residents. We can handle that however you guys please.
I mean, it would need a vote if if somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt this tiered system with adjusted base rates and water usage rates.
Just for the record, can you list the base rates?
Sure. Base rate of one hundred dollars for sewer and one hundred and two dollars for water per quarter. And then water usage rates of nine dollars and fifty cents and sewer of eleven dollars and fifty. With a tier increase at twenty thousand gallons to ten and a half dollars per thousand and twelve dollars per thousand.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, by saying aye. The voters, I don't think I can vote if I'm running the meeting, but if I can, I vote yes. Okay, motion passed. CD renewal, is that you Dana?
It is.
Tell us we're making lots of money.
We actually are.
Even better.
Okay, so we had two CDs that came to mature on Saturday and one on Sunday. One was general fund and one was enterprise. So farmers and merchants, we originally invested two hundred and fifty K at seven months at four point six four percent. The cash out is two fifty six eighty two, I'm sorry, two fifty six eight hundred and twenty two dollars and ninety one cents. So six thousand eight hundred and twenty two dollars and ninety one cents made in seven months in interest alone. With CQ that we use money from the developer fund. We invested two hundred and fifty at thirteen for at with thirteen months at four point nine pers- four point nine one percent. The cash out is two hundred and sixty three thousand, one hundred and forty six dollars and forty eight cents. So thirteen thousand, one forty six point forty eight, maybe just over a year. So just under twenty thousand dollars in interest on those two. I just wanna know what you guys would like to do with the funds. I've reached out to a couple of banks and got some new rates. Chase, another twelve month at three percent. I should prepare you, they are not the five percents like we were talking about, they have gone down. Farmers and and merchants have seven months at three point eight five percent for thirteen months. I'm sorry, for seven months, I got all that wrong, seven months at three point eight five percent and then thirteen months at three point two five percent. Woodsboro has five months at three point three zero and nine months at two point nine nine. Yeah, CQ has nine months at four point oh five and twelve months at three point six five. I reached out to AC and B as well. T bills are still pretty good, they have a six month at three point nine five, a twelve month at three point seven five. And a twenty four month at three point eight two. They currently do have a couple CDs that are twelve months and they have an interest rate of four point oh five percent or four point one five percent. I will tell you, interest rates are changing daily. So what I tell you today, when I call tomorrow, it could be a little different. I do suggest we take the interest and put into our capital reserve. And I'm reaching out to AC and B, I have a meeting set with Roxanne. I wanna change our checking account that our capital reserves are in to getting a better interest rate with maybe a money market. And she's pulling some information with me. The money market would still allow us to take out, we only get six a month. We could take out up to six withdrawals, deposit up to six deposits, which is totally fine for those reserve accounts. But I have more information at the council meeting. It's just whatever you gentlemen.
What what was the the principal on that first CD that matured with the sixty eight hundred dollar interest?
It was four point six four.
The principal amount?
Oh, two hundred and fifty K.
They were both two fifty?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The max amount, yeah.
Okay.
We currently have about a million invested in CDs.
Do we do we? Need that, do we need this five hundred thousand?
Short term.
In a short term.
My question is.
I mean.
We have other places.
We have other places, we have capital reserve for both general and enterprise that do have a healthy amount in them. Now, if you're talking and Gary, please correct me, the capital budget lines are if they need to happen. Like if we can and when they need to happen. Like come July first, I'm not putting X amount of dollars, no, no. We'll pull them as it needs to happen. So it is, I mean, if you're looking at a year, so what month are we, March?
March.
Twenty twenty six. So, I mean, we've still got a couple of months. But it would be up to you guys if you wanted to do short or long.
What, are there any penalties for pulling out? Do you know what they are roughly?
Mary, on which CD you would choose? I mean, I I don't go, if you don't go into that details until.
Um, and then the rates are fixed?
Yes.
I'm in favor for, at this point with the economy, shorter terms at the higher percentages. Because we can have this discussion again in six months, eight months, depending on which shorter term. And see where we stand with interest rates as the economy. I don't think they're gonna get too much lower as we move on unless it gets really bad. But that would be a risk I would be willing to take.
And do a longer term like a twelve month, I would suggest doing that with the enterprise and the CQ one. It was developer fund, that account has a very hefty amount in there. And can be stretched out a longer amount of time to make a little bit more money for enterprise.
So you had a, I I heard you say there was a seven month at three point eight five.
Yeah.
Farmers, yes.
There's a nine at four oh five.
And then there is a nine at four oh five and a twelve month at four oh five or four fifteen. That was a CD.
Is that the CQ?
Yeah, CQ was four oh five at nine months. AC and B was a CD at twelve months with either four oh five or four one five.
I could do the nine at four oh five.
Are you thinking that the shorter term might give us a chance to increase that that rate?
I mean, you're playing a gamble, but I would not expect it to go too much lower in nine months. If anything, you may see a recovery or we need that cash on hand to handle things because the economy is bad. I don't think I I would not want, my personal finances, I would not wanna do a twelve month with. The fluctuations that we've been seeing recently. I would wanna try to go short and then potentially capitalize on the back end. And I would max out whatever we can, especially with like the developer fund since we typically don't touch that. In shorter amounts or shorter time amounts because then we can not re up it. When in six months, we may need to pull that money out kinda deal.
Did I hear you say that you were saying put the developer one in the in the longer one and then the other one in the shorter one?
We have a lot of money in the developer fund. A lot of money that we wouldn't grab all once.
We're not planning to touch it.
I would put it in a longer term because no one knows what's gonna happen tomorrow, no one knows what's gonna happen in six months. There's lots of talk about other things as well. And then I would do a shorter term with the general fund money.
So is the short is the shorter term, are we thinking seven months, three eight five, is that the best?
Whatever the highest one we could get.
You think that was, you can still consider that short, nine months?
You had seven at three point eight.
Or seven at three point eight five.
I mean, the difference in two months was.
It's two months difference, but you get a higher interest rate, I would I would prefer that one.
Towards the nine because that at that point, we're six months into FY twenty six. And we're not gonna need to touch that money until beyond that point.
You gotta remember, we're gonna do this soon, right?
The four months till.
Till this fiscal year that we're not even, so you're three months into whatever length the term is gonna go.
Nine months sounds like the right one then?
Yes.
Twelve for the bigger.
Nine, what was the interest rate at the nine month?
The nine was four point oh five.
Yeah.
CQ.
And the long term was?
Twelve at four one five with AC and B, maybe four one five.
Do you need a motion for that?
I think we do, yeah.
Alright, I'll make a motion to invest the developer fund into ACMB. And at four one five or four oh five.
Four point oh five, yeah.
Four point oh five. And the general fund into CQ for four point, what was it, four point?
Four point, four point oh five.
Four point oh five.
Nine months.
At nine months.
Second though.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, by saying aye. Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, the next thing that I see on the agenda is the Vietnam traveling memorial wall. And um, the mayor sent me an email with some notes and um. Essentially what he's looking for is, um, let me just read what it says. The, the Vietnam wall committee is seeking approval for a Huey helicopter to land on the Lions Ball Field. It would only be there for a few hours on the Saturday, which is the ninth in twenty, in twenty twenty six, which is. I mean, twenty twenty five, which is when the wall would be here, or the tenth, I guess. And then if it rained that day, they would land it on the Sunday, um, they're gonna get their, the permits that they need and. Um, take all the necessary safety precautions that are required. But I, I think we have to have a motion um, to allow that to happen. I think it's, you know.
Those are ramifications of doing that, I mean.
Blow the wall over?
Aircraft, trust me.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Is it a lot bigger than uh, um, the shock trauma?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's the twin, yeah.
Okay, I know what those are, yeah.
If you hook it up, it's a big, heavy.
That's a, that's a Chinook, a Huey's the shorter, it's a single prop, isn't it?
I, I always think Hueys is double, but I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but.
Well, I'm thinking more, you know, on that field, I don't, I mean, what prep are we gonna need to do for it to land on that field?
Yeah, Huey's a single, it's, it's probably a pretty similar size to the shock trauma one, it's, it's probably bigger.
That one?
Um, but it is the single, it's the one that they have around on the um, the flatbed that they've taken to like flood zone, not that specific one, but that. It is a Huey that they drive around some.
Yeah, I was thinking.
A major thing, you're bringing a helicopter in if something were to happen.
Yeah, I was thinking more, you know.
We have. We've had the, the shock drama land there.
You're worried about the field, Kevin?
Yeah.
I don't know what those things weigh, I don't think they're, it's not like, I think it's displaced, I don't know, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, well, if we've had the shock trauma one there, then we should be fine.
Where they are all the time.
Fifty two hundred pounds.
Fifty two hundred?
That's nothing. It's gonna be spread out a little bit.
Nah, it, I'd say probably worst case, you have two little indents from.
Right, and they wanna put that where? The baseball field.
Well, it's cause the wall's gonna be on the carnival ground, right?
It's separated enough, but still a part of things.
So it'll land and they'll just be, it, it'll that be there for show more than.
Well, the veterans can come see a, a helicopter from that timeline.
Yeah, it's part of the whole event.
I don't have too much concern with it on the field.
Yeah, I thought.
Thinking the infield first, but it's probably better to be in the grass.
They probably will, yeah.
Bigger area and, and, and probably less impact. We could always put, you know, boards down of some kind, landing thing, but just feed and spread it out more, but fifty five hundred pounds.
Yeah, that's nothing.
Major of a problem.
Unless it rains a whole lot, I don't think they need boards or anything.
If it rains too, I don't think they probably would land.
The day's leading up to it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
They might not wanna come if it was, you know, mushy over there, but, so it's, he says he's seeking approval, so do we, we, we think we need a motion for this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve uh, landing on the Lions Club.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, somebody saying aye? Alright, next is the Maryland thirty one sidewalk improvement project. Um, I think he's talked a little bit about this at other meetings. I'll just read again what he said. Um, a sidewalk from the four hundred block of on Main Street to seven eleven. I need approval from the council to put in a sidewalk from the four hundred block to the seven eleven. And um, I will send an official request to the state highway administration for the sidewalk to be included in the streetscape. Now, I'm just gonna editorialize this a little bit, cause I had a meeting with Gary last week, and I know that there's some issues with that project. But um, for the purposes of this being an agenda item, I, I think he just wants us to, um.
Agree in principle?
To agree in principle or make a motion, I mean, the, the concern that he brought up, he called me to talk about this on the phone is the, because um. There is no sidewalk in that section, there would need to be two crosswalks, so somebody could come to the end of the sidewalk. Cross over to the other side and then cross back to, you know, I assume the seven eleven's not really a sidewalk, but, you know, so that's, that was one concern that's already been brought up. But um, I know, like I said, I know there's problems with the project, but for this particular agenda item, I think we, he just wants us to, in. Theory, agree that if, if we got new sidewalks, we would.
Yeah, I don't think the, the, the crosswalk would even be a viable option.
No, I don't think so either.
You'd have to cross into Springdale Prep property, walk across their driveway, then down to the walking path.
Visibility there is terrible.
State of Maryland has come in and said they won't put a crosswalk there.
The issue with the crosswalk is sight distance, and the only place you can get the sight distance is at. And it's marginal, but it does make it is uh, right before you get to between um, Rup and uh, Blue Ridge.
Yes, and even that, like you said, marginal.
And yeah, I, I, I'm not sure what he's asking uh, for, because we've, the state. The state has asked, we've, we've asked the state to extend that sidewalk, they looked at it. Um, you have a couple issues of with just design and, and functionality of it. The, the, as you go down towards seven eleven, the properties sit below the gray, the road. And to be able to put in a sidewalk, there's a section that has to follow grade wise, and then to grade down. You're gonna be basically grading right onto somebody's porch. So there's that, and then the increase in the stormwater, the state's not providing any stormwater facility or management. For their project, and they approached, they asked the county for a waiver to have it. Get to the drainage ditch alongside Garbers underneath it, at, at church there. They denied it because there's already an existing um, drainage problem in, with that existing culvert. Going down through there, cause it, it's defined right near Garbers, but as you get to the back and then, and it just starts to pan out. And then water ends up going down actually towards Brethren. I guess it is, so, I, I, you know, I, I think in that meeting, uh, you came in late on that meeting, right? I think they talked about that during the meeting of the crosswalk being where I mentioned it there. Versus anywhere else because of the sight distance.
But e- even still, if we do have that crosswalk there, we would still have to have people walk into private property. To get over to the um, to the walking path.
Cause there's no sidewalk in front of.
On that side, so I don't know, I, I, I'm assuming, and that's not the right thing to do. I'm assuming that the state plans is, is, is putting in sidewalk.
On that side.
On that side, but I'd have to look.
I've never heard that.
I'd have to look at the plans, I don't know why they, to your point, why would you direct people, if you're gonna have sidewalk on both sides of Main Street coming up? And then you're gonna get people to cross over because you can't extend it down on this side due to whatever constraints there are. You, there has to be a, like you said, a place for them to walk in a public right of way. So, I'd, I'd have to look, and the plans I have are, they're not.
When I walked them through it, and we walked all the way down there, they were talking about those exact issues, Gary, that you were talking about, the grading. And we walked it back to where they'd have to put in the walkway because of the sight lines. And they were just, there was no talk of putting a sidewalk in front of, cause I think that would require a road. Change to make room to put a sidewalk there, and they were just, look, oh, people just walked on and, and.
Across the driveway.
And that's, that's not acceptable either. So, I don't know, I have Neil's email, and it looks like he's just looking for us in principle to say he's gonna. Put in some kind of official request.
Basically, yeah.
To include that and see where it goes.
But I think at this point, it's like, like Dave said, it's just.
I mean, if he wants us to have like, when he puts in this request, like we've done in the past, where all the council members sign onto that, I'd be all for it.
Yeah, I think that's basically what he's asking.
Again, are pushed back, then, then push for the sidewalk in, in, in front there, they'll have to do a retaining wall and put a sidewalk in there.
In front of residences.
No, in front of, in front of uh, the Springdale, where Ziegler Hall is. Cause that road and there's an embankment up to the, to the parking lot.
Right.
So you'd have to put in a, a retaining wall to get any kinda sidewalk, and they're not gonna put a sidewalk in that doesn't meet ADA, and that's five feet wide.
Yeah.
And it would have to go all the way down to that, where that other crosswalk is, then too. Instead of just saying, okay, go onto the road and then come back down, cause. If I remember correctly, that, that path there that goes across seven eleven goes on to the other road. And then you have.
Springdale?
Yeah.
Yeah. Across that triangular piece?
Make any sense, because if you were someone coming out of Spore Line, you'd have to walk away from seven eleven. To get to the crosswalk, to go back.
People cutting the grass.
You would have to go off.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a, a viable or.
Is there any walk on, as you head down from Springdale where the Y is? You're heading down to seven eleven, on, on the, the Springdale side where that triangular piece is, is there a walk there?
I'm pretty sure there's a path there.
From the crosswalk up to the driveway.
Yes.
There's a sidewalk up on.
Along, along thirty one.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So then you really would only need sidewalk across from Blue Ridge to, to the split. And then have another cross back over there, you'd have to have another crosswalk.
They weren't willing to put a crosswalk there.
I mean, I mean going, the, the crosswalk perpendicular to thirty one was where the sight distance issue was. Which, which I think they had to pull it back to Blue Ridge, but if you get people across, they put a sidewalk across Springdale. And then they dump you out at the Y, the crosswalk would be across basically Springdale's and tr- Springdale Road. And tied into the sidewalk there, which it's not sight distance issue there.
Which they got a side, I mean, there is a crosswalk right there.
Is there?
Yeah, but you would still need that path up to.
The, the problem with that is you're going around the barn to get to seven eleven, and people aren't gonna do that.
People are just gonna walk in the road or whatever.
I mean, you, you're not gonna go all the way around the barn to get to seven eleven when you're right there and seven eleven's three houses down from you, you're not gonna, people are, kids. People are not gonna do that.
I mean, you can see the walking marks already, you know, people just walk right through.
Well, he just wants our approval, so, I don't think we need a motion, just consensus. He wants to put it in the proposal is all, is all he's asking for. Okay, and then I think these other two are mostly updates, he um. He said, I'll just read it again, he, this is regarding congressional appropriations. Uh, I've submitted two funding requests through Congressman Johnny Wieschowski's office today, the first one was for. Enterprise funds projects, I increased the amount for meter and MXU replacements. Lead and copper rule or LCR, main line, lead and copper rule, LCR service line replacement and sewer lining. I requested five hundred and twenty five thousand with the town funding one hundred. The second request was for road paving, I requested two hundred thousand dollars with the town funding fifty five thousand for that project. We should know in April or May if the requests are forwarded for funding approval. Even if we did some of the project listed in the FY twenty six budget, before receiving the funding, January twenty six. We could ask to reappropriate the funds to other projects, as we will always have paving projects and water and sewer projects. Yeah, I can forward this to you. And then I said, it says, I, he will go into more detail at the next meeting.
So that's what you have in your projects, two fifty five, so he's saying the tonal kick in the fifty five, he's asking for two hundred to throw towards that.
Yes.
So that's, that doesn't affect our budget particularly.
That's highway, that's, it's in the list of projects, but not in specifically in the budget, other, because it's highway user.
Hundred thousand um, for the meters, is that what we, did we budget that much?
Uh, just interior meter replacement?
Yeah, it's um, yeah, yeah, interior. And then we added that as a budget item.
I think we were doing.
Seventy five thousand, but.
Meaning replacement, we were doing water meter upgrades. We were just doing uh, basically twenty, twenty thousand a year. Well, we ran, we're doing nineteen thousand in fiscal year twenty five and then inflating it a little bit for the cost of the meters. Twenty thousand in twenty six and twenty one thousand in twenty seven, not sure, what was, he's asking for a hundred thousand on?
He said with the town funding a hundred.
Yeah.
He wants.
He's asking for five twenty five.
Well, that also goes with the lead.
That's all the other stuff too.
That's another um, line item, and that's where the majority of the cost is.
So maybe we got a hundred thousand wrapped up, so he's just asking the.
The lead abatement um, that is coming down the pipeline is very costly and will be mandatory.
Yeah, we have the, the ma- lead service line main replacement. Uh, we had, we're looking, we put in fifty, in, just in the, the six year outlook, fifty thousand for twenty six. On the main replacement and twenty five thousand on the ser- sewer uh, service line replacements.
Okay, so there, well, there, there's, there's a hundred between the three.
Not the meters, that's the lateral line, that's the mains or the laterals.
Okay.
So that's that.
Yeah, send that to me, please.
I'd, I'd just send it to you, so, I think that was more, mostly just FYI, so everybody knew it, that he had done that. Alright, anything else?
I got a couple things, if no one else has anything, just a couple updates quick. Uh, Main Street and High Street paving, um, CJ Miller, one of S, uh, S H A District Seven paving contracts. Will be milling and overlaying Main and High Street this spring. Where they're waiting on notice to proceed in a definitive schedule, but the estimated, it's estimated to begin early May. Um, I've been in touch with District Seven and have requested a schedule uh, once determined, so we can post on the website and Facebook. So they, and I confirmed at the, during that meeting, cause they had their paving geotech guy. And he's sitting there saying, we're gonna, we're, we're repaving the whole row, we're milling and overlaying the road, and I'm like. So I understand, you guys are milling and overlaying curb to curb. And they, and they gave me a map, and they had a map, so, and then I said, then how is that affecting this sidewalk project? And he said, it's not affecting it, and I said, to be clear. You're gonna mill and overlay curb to curb in May of this year, and when the sidewalk project's done, you're gonna come and do it again. That's the answer I got, was yes, so if that's any indication of where that sidewalk project's going.
Exact, it's exactly.
Cause the, and then the map that they gave, just so you guys know, and I'll, I'll post it and we'll get this information out so people know, even though it's state road. And we're gonna have a state number to call for complaints, is starting at the railroad tracks, coming through here, going out. Um, to Town View Circle, where Town View Circle comes in, and then they're also going straight around the loop, the bypass. And back out to Main Street there, so that's all, that's all being done, it's probably mid, beginning mid-May. That's coming, which is good, but it's, you know how it is with paving projects, it's gonna be.
Not good, cause that means we just get kicked down the road again. Cause they'll say, oh, wow, we can't do your state highway, we just spent all this money paving your road, that's what's gonna happen with that.
Well, I thought that they had mentioned that this mill and overlay they do would be just an inch.
Well, they think that, but I got news from, when they start cutting that road, that road is failing bad.
Yeah, I know that, but it's still, it's still, you know, well, I'm hopeful.
Yeah, okay.
That, you know, and it is.
This fiscal year.
Is kind of a t- temporary, because the, the road's so bad, that to do it correctly. The way we need it done with our streetscape is, is not just gonna be a mill and overlay, it's gonna be.
Dave, I'm gonna jump on your whole project there.
Gary, I, I was on the part of the meeting where Gary.
I want to be very clear.
And then it's very clear. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I will follow up if I can, if I.
Wh- where did you say it's gonna go again, from what?
It's gonna start down here to railroad tracks, come through. Um, and then it's basically going both directions at the intersection, it's gonna go down around the, the uh, bypass. Down around the fire department, out to seventy five and then back in, and then all the way out past seven eleven to where Town View Circle. Which is Snyder Summit comes in. So out past the pump station, so that's another thing, we're gonna have to coordinate, hopefully our pump station will be done by then. But, again. But again, that's, we, all we're gonna get is a schedule and be able to post it and things like that. We, we can't really control that, you know, so.
Sure can.
Um, then also Route Drive Water Main Replacement, um, we, the review of the Maryland thirty one. Water main replacement grant expenditures by Dana and I indicated that we have money available to replace that water main in Route Drive. From Main Street to Church Street. Uh, Mid-Atlantic is scheduled to start with installation of the bypass on Monday, March thirty first. And we're preparing door hangers and a press release for the website and Facebook and residents there. That, Cybo Field request by, uh, requested used by Brad Gist. I finally received a revised letter of intent from Brad on March thirteenth. Prepared and sent a letter to Heidelberg Materials, that's was previously Lehigh. On March fourteenth requesting approval on behalf of New Windsor Black Sox. To use, repair and maintain Cybo Field One, which is the smaller front field from April. Through November first, twenty twenty five. Upon approval from Lehigh, an MOU will be prepared and sent to New Windsor Black Sox for review, approval and signature. I've also requested Brad provide me with days and times for practices, games and tournaments for April through November. So calendars can be prepared. That is really, really important to have calendars. So the, the teams using them have them and then the public works guys have them. Because we've, we've run into situations that people are using Lions Club Field that are not authorized to use it. We put signs up just recently saying, use of this field is by approval of the town, please contact the town manager at this number. But if you're not there and you're not practicing, or it's after hours and public works isn't there or it's on weekend. At least the guy who shows up that had, that is scheduled to have the field says, I got the count, I got the field here. So it's been kinda like pulling teeth with Brad, but. Finally got the letter of intent that I need, so. That's that, that's all.
A club using the field now, I saw a group there Saturday.
Lions Club? Yeah, that's, they're part of Reapers or seventeen and under. But they, they fall under the M, the MOU for that field is, is with the original guys Brad, um. Paul and, and uh, Tom, um, Ron Manzo. But this guy, um, uh, what's his name, Stu, this is, I don't, can't remember his last name. He's got the seventeen and under team and he's working on it, the field and stuff. Yeah.
They had a pretty big operation there Saturday.
Did they?
Yeah. Good?
Yeah. That's all I have.
Thank you, Gary. Anything else?
Yeah, um, Councilwoman Schultz, did uh, did the mayor give you a date for the next um. Traveling, traveling hall. Vietnam, yeah, for the next meeting.
Does not have that in his. Email here. He could, may, I'm sure he's watching. Mayor, maybe you could email everybody that date, that would be helpful. Yelling me cause I did something wrong. Alright, if nothing else, can we get a motion to adjourn?
We'll make the motion to adjourn.
Can all those in favor see by saying aye? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.